Great, I'll call this planning board of the village of Cold Spring to order. Welcome, everybody. We have a full house today and a lot on the agenda, so we'll try to move expediently through everything. Please be patient depending on where you fall, but we'll jump into it. Opportunity to, to the board to, to add or modify agenda items for today. I'd like to make a motion to add reviewing our meeting note, our notes from previous, from the two previous meetings to the, you know, the approval of minutes. I think that's second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Great, great. Let's move on to that. So you should have. Yep. Twenty third first.
Yes, I think for the twenty fifth. And Ben were not present for that, so it would be. You, Kevin, and.
Yeah.
The board, it's good by me. I'll make a motion to approve meeting minutes. April twenty fifth, twenty twenty four.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor, right?
No, it's just the three of us. Yeah, hi.
Down. May fifth, the main night.
I looked these over before they were coming in.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of May ninth.
Second.
Favor?
Hi.
All right, move on. We have one correspondence from ZBA request for comment on an application for eighteen months out. There's a packet in front of you describes the change. I can give everyone a quick summary. But basically, the garage deck in front of, that's in front of the house is being raised slightly, and there's a small bump out on the first floor that extends a very small degree into the side yard. So it's a, it's a pretty minimal change. I personally don't have any, any comments on it, but everyone should take a second and review. Carolyn?
Yeah, I was probably really well, I think, I think this could be an improvement.
Yeah.
Which is, I think they've done really good things with the property so far, and I think it could actually really improve the property.
I don't know if that's official planning board terminology, but.
I'll make a motion for me to communicate to the VBA chair that the planning board has no comment. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, old business. Twenty six May. Would you like to tell us what's been going on since the last time we chatted?
Yeah, so I put together the presentation of all the information that you were looking for. We're getting ready to take the dance studio and make it into a retail space. We're focused on bringing kind of globally inspired housewares and furniture to the area. It's just less than about thousands square feet with space and everything. You know, should I walk you through what I've?
So my recollection is that we asked for additional, some type of survey of the, of the exterior of the site.
Yeah.
Some pictures of the entrances and the walkways, lighting, trash, and parking.
Right.
I think those are all then included in the, in the packet.
They have them.
Yeah.
Okay. It's a nice job. Good job.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you for doing that. I know that it was more than you were expecting, but it's, it's super useful to have that detail in order to move things along. So on the parking, so you had, there were two spaces in that brick block behind you.
Yes, so there's actually room for, I think I said, five spaces, you know. But we have two of them. If somebody needed to use one, we have one employee, myself.
Yeah.
Who will be using those during the week. If we had like design clients who are coming in though, obviously, somebody could use that if they were going to be there for a couple of hours and going through swatches and stuff like that.
Yeah. Does anyone have any questions about the materials that were submitted or things that they thought about in the interim?
Yeah, I think it was gonna be, the only, I think, are you gonna be selling small pieces or larger pieces?
They're mostly gonna be, it's gonna be a lot of tabletop and giftware that is being carried out. Things for furniture, we've been looking for vendors that can drop ship.
Okay.
Because we're not gonna be able to really ship from the store and everything. So, you know, we're looking for people to order custom pieces and then have those delivered right to their home.
Okay, cool. So this is sort of gets outside the purview of the planning board, and so I believe maybe I shouldn't get into the weeds here, but what we don't want to get into is a situation where you've got a twenty-six-foot freight truck parked there on the weekend, jamming things up, and the neighbors are going nuts.
Yeah.
Like, we don't, we don't want that coming back to us and then the neighbors complaining and stuff, so just.
That's a, that's a part of the use. Any, any, any reasonable consideration of the use is, is fair game here.
I will say that we had a forty-eight-inch table delivered to us, and they brought it on an eighteen-wheeler, and you know, it just, it wasn't communicated with that vendor where we were located, and they've made note of it that they will only bring a box truck. So, you know, we're hoping we don't have more issues like that, but that was a learning, you know.
It will happen time to time, just, just if you could get into the micromanagement of that sometimes. I know it's a pain in the neck, but it's, it's, I think it's really important, especially given the narrow turns there.
Yeah.
You know, it's a, it's a seventeen-century, eighteen-century street system down there, so.
We actually also have a receiver that we're working with in New Jersey, and so they're able to take our products from the companies that don't deliver with like loading docks and things like that and deliver it to us with a lift gate and everything. So we've already set up that process too.
Okay, so that's also time of the week as well, so.
Yeah.
What are your expected hours?
We're looking to be open around the same time everyone else is, ten thirty to about five thirty, six o'clock on weekends.
Anyone else?
No.
Would anyone like to make a motion to consider this application complete?
I'll make a motion to consider this application complete.
Second.
All in favor? So I think we can try to schedule a hearing for June thirteenth would be the next available time. Are folks available? I think Ben, you are not available.
That's about the last day that I think is available.
You can be available that day, okay?
Before July.
Oh, before July, okay.
I might not be available, I don't mind.
Okay.
I should be available.
Be good?
Yeah.
We can have more on that day, so. So let's go ahead and schedule for the.
Thirteen.
For the thirteen.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good job.
I do have a list of addresses for the applicants to send out their notices.
Okay.
I sent it to you on, I don't know if you had a chance to just.
I'm not, but I will, I'll do that before I leave today.
Okay. But we'll get that to you, and then there's the sign in the front office for you to put on.
Otherwise Karen will come and staple it to your building. Okay, great. That's twenty six May. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next is six Velvet Ear. I think we've got an updated site plan. This is for a subdivision. Rare occurrence in the village.
And that's one page?
Yes, we have, we have this one page. So my comments about this are, the only thing that we asked for that I don't see here is I want the partial A on the dimensional table as well since just because that's, that's, there are dimensions of that that are, that are kind of new as a result of the subdivision. But I think this is, I think close enough for, for at least referring to the, the.
The engineering.
To the village area, yeah.
I can get that like revised to tomorrow and have that submitted as well.
Okay, great. Do we need a motion to, to refer to the village of the year? Okay, all right, great. We'll just make enough to do that. Did you have any questions or concerns or new information you wanted to share with the board before?
Not so much. I, I haven't. Yeah, I think we've made all the changes besides that parcel, so as long as you guys are, don't need any more information.
The, I'm curious about how the, how did the identification of the approximate location of the water main and the sewer and.
Through conversations with four different surveyors that I kind of tracked down, I, I, to be honest with you, I couldn't get any further information, so I had to send my engineer out to the site.
Yeah.
And he did his due diligence, and that's what he came up with.
Really? Well, I mean, it's a private, it's a private road, so it's probably not super well documented.
Yeah, yeah, it's been an interesting, you know. I don't know what is it, it's just a scatter dron.
Yeah. And John, I think this is within five hundred feet of
Of ninety.
Of ninety, so we will need to refer it to the county.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. Okay. It's what's the, what? The referral is, I guess, does that, will that occur once we do the application complete?
No, you can send it anytime.
Okay.
Really, unless something Karen would normally just take care of.
Okay, all right. I can work on that.
So that being said, excuse me. Returning to the county, so is that going to be an additional step now to go to them?
There's a, basically, there's, there's a trigger law that basically says any site plan review that occurs, I think it's just some other like CBA variance.
Yeah.
Basically, a bunch, a bunch of things that if they happen within five hundred feet of a state road.
State road or municipal boundary. It has to get referred to the county planning department, but it's something the, the planning board takes care of, and ninety-nine percent of the time the county will have no comment on it. All right, that makes sense.
It's, yeah, it's basically to give jurisdictional power as a chance to weigh in. If they, if they.
What kind of timeframe would that be?
So thirty-day window to, and if it goes beyond thirty days, then we assume they have no comment, so.
Okay.
It's pretty straightforward.
Thirty days from today?
No, whenever we let them know, we, we'll let you know when we, when we submit it.
Okay, all right, beautiful. Thank you, guys.
Yeah. Okay. That's all for six East Velvet Ear. Let's do seventy-two Main first because the public may even take a little bit longer, and I want everyone.
And just before the applicant leaves, so should he plan on coming back for another review on the thirteenth then?
Probably depends on what we get back from the village engineer, so I think for now. No, but
Okay.
We'll, we'll, we'll let you know if that changes.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's good.
Let's move on to seventy-two Main. Before we get into. Do we have the applicants for seventy-two Main? Great. Would you like to introduce yourself and, and the project?
Stan.
You can, whatever is comfortable to you comes in at the, at the table or.
Hello, my name's Brian Tormy, and I actually, I might invite John up as well. He's gonna be the proprietor of the proposed change of use of that. Live in the area, purchased the property which includes seventy-two and seventy-six Main a little while ago. I've been working on sort of doing some general cleanup and conversion to more energy-efficient operations in both buildings. We've got a planned change of use. John and Sarah operate several businesses in Cold Spring and are, I think, well-known in the community. And we've worked out a plan to install a deli in what was the Kismet space at seventy-two Main. No internal wall changes or sort of other arrangement changes from the prior use. The plan, and I'll let John expand on it a little bit more fully as to sort of what the deli plan is and sort of the thematic plan, but, but generally speaking, takeaway prepared foods with no larger structural changes or site plan changes, et cetera, other than what it has been for many, many, many years.
Anything you'd like to add?
It's just a, we're just doing a deli, just trying to bring some food to some different option to Main Street. We're gonna tie in the Haldane Sports. We're gonna, I've talked to Haldane. If you have memorabilia from years past or present, we're gonna display it in, in the building. I used to be in the army a long time ago. I'll have some West Point ties a little bit. We're just gonna kind of create a space where if you get in a deli, it's a little sports thing. Just some different sandwiches, different things in town. Like I said, different, something that's, you know, it'll go. It'll give somebody, you know, a really different option in town to grab and go. Nothing, nothing crazy, but just like a different vibe. You know, we're gonna have music on and some LED lights going and just kind of like a different.
Yeah.
You know, places get kind of boring and stale, and we're just, I just, a couple of years I've been thinking about this, just to create a space that's a little more fun.
Yeah.
A little more somewhere I go, go and hang out and feel like, you know, get a good sub or good sandwich and and that's just kind of it. Tie, tie the town into it and get the sports involved. They can come and do their thing. We'll have PlayStation fives and Xboxes hooked up, and they can come do that later at night and work all those details out.
What kind of hours do you think you'll be having?
We'll do six to six or seven to six, depending on the morning, how it is, you know, we're not like, we're not gonna be like the delis that are out of town where everybody's driving up to, so we'll see how the sell goes in the morning, but we will have breakfast food available. And like I said, we're just trying to just do something different.
That would be the earliest cup of coffee you could get in the village.
I might call out some of the sort of orientation towards how they end sort of a safe space for the youth of the town, sort of during both lunch and, and after school, so just a place that they can come and go and, and feel comfortable. I think Fiverr's have shown in their other operations to sort of be very friendly and warm towards the the high school kids sort of coming through town.
Yeah, our goal is like, this way I pitched it to them, that is, the sports teams is you can bring your softball team or soccer team, whoever, and you can come when we're closed at six o'clock. You can come after hours and just, you know, we'll, we don't, you know, we don't have to have food for you, like, we can make something for you, or they can just come, we'll just be there. And they can, like I said, they can play FIFA against each other, you know, PlayStation if they wanted to, or just have a meeting of some kind, just something different than just having your regular, you know, going to pizza places, great, always have pizza. Pizza's always gonna be the top. And I don't blame them for that, so that's always, always a good spot, and we're not trying to take you away from anybody in town. Especially when you're friends with people, you try to work with each other.
Is there gonna be any outdoor space used? I know that right now there is outdoor space that's there.
Yes, I mean, we'll, we'll cross that when it comes to it, but we'll, you know, we'll clean up the area on the side. It will be, you know, hopefully down the line we'll have some, something out there to sit. Well, it's a grab and go though, so you'll have, there's a couple tables out there, there'll be a couple, you know, a couple spots to sit.
No plans for nighttime dining with.
No.
No. Just like outside.
Yep, just, just to go.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you gonna keep it pink and purple?
Although I know Karen very well, and she was very iconic, I definitely have to move on from it. It's definitely gonna have to change. And we will have, you know.
We'll be bidding for a dash of, for the signage. We'll be selling a dash of sass as.
I appreciate that, that, you know, it's gonna be kind of more focused toward the village residents, as, you know, we're all village residents up here, so it's nice when businesses open that are a little bit more internally focused, given how much of the business on Main Street is externally focused, so appreciate that. I have a couple of notes about the application that I wanted to run through with you. So the the site plan that you've submitted is just a floor plan and an external survey. We need a little bit more detail with respect to the use here, just in terms of pointing out access, trash, lighting, signage. Question about outdoor seating, and, and so that, this is, you know, just more information that we need as a part of that, that site plan. It will help us understand what the impact will be, where it sits. There's a kind of interesting thing on the code where, where we don't have fine-grained uses in the code for restaurant, for different types of eateries. So this is, that falls under the broad category of restaurant. Obviously, given what you've shown, like two, two tables inside, it's a deli, it's like you said, it's a grab and go, very different footprint of traffic and engagement with the village than what's next door.
Pusshon.
Yeah. So, but the code doesn't really provide that nuance to us unfortunately. So as it stands, the parking table has a minimum of six parking spaces required. I know there's parking in the back. But this is six parking meters for a thousand square feet. I think you're seven, seven fifty-ish. So it was probably like four to five, depending on how rounding works.
And I had a little bit of a clarifying question there. I just wasn't sure what, I think it's a gross floor area for the total floor, right? It's not the deli, it's not the public part, it's the total. But then, yeah, you're in the right zone.
Yeah.
Four-ish.
Yeah.
Like a lot of.
Yeah, yeah. So the, obviously, like parking is a general problem in the village.
Yeah.
Every, if, if, every, every business on Main Street faces a similar challenge. So the, the normal way that we kind of proceed through this, like, until we identify what the, you know, whether or not you meet the, the required four, if you don't, the paths forward are that you either sue a variance from the ZBA, saying, basically saying it's okay, don't worry about it. Or you need two, or you need three, or whatever, whatever the, whatever the reduction ends up being, or you can ask us to refer you to the village board for a parking waiver. So those are the, those are two paths forward that you can take on that.
Is there a third, the payment in lieu of parking?
That's the, that's the waiver. That's the waiver through the village board, so all we would need to know is that you wanted that referral, and we would basically, we would write that for you to, to send over to the village board.
That's the plan.
That's the plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
There, there's no access to parking in the buildings.
There is. It's, it's a pretty interesting historic lot. You can see on the survey, and I have extra prints, but it looks.
The back's brick, right?
Yeah. It's off Fair Street. It meets the, the width access requirement for parking back there. The space has been used during COVID by Le Bouchon. They sort of, during COVID regulations, expanded into backspace. It's not included as part of their leased space. So there is parking back there that meets the eighteen-foot-by-nine-foot requirements for up to, it's sort of, I've got a little bit of questions about sort of like somebody access angular stuff of cars playing there, but somewhere in the five-to-six car.
Yes.
Slot footprint within, it's a pretty easy fulfillment.
Those shares with Le Bouchon.
But, but, right, but would share with Le Bouchon.
Yeah.
The, however, I think I, for timeliness sake, I think we could all use a good deli sandwich and a good breakfast sandwich.
Yep.
So for timeliness sake, my plan, unless the board thinks, has thoughts otherwise, is to be referred to the village board to pursue the payment in lieu, so the waiver and payment in lieu, instead of applying for use of those spaces in the back, and then possibly pursue that at a later date.
Okay, so just so I get this straight, so I know what, what we're articulating to the village board. You don't, you basically would like to allocate none of the spaces in the back for the deli, leave them all for Le Bouchon's. And the wa, the waiver will be for all of those, for, for all the required, for, for the four required for the deli.
Yep. Correct.
Is any of that parking already allocated to the Le Bouchon building?
I don't. It should be, there should have been one space in the back that was, well, who knows the history, but theoretically, the, the, the previous retail spot would, would have been required to have one, so.
Maybe, yeah, we have to take, but.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So the count goes up because of the use change?
Yes. Yeah, but I was mentioning at the beginning about the, about the restaurant that's.
Right, okay, God.
I'm still very glad that the, that the zoning changed and got cleaned up in other ways.
Yeah.
Even if it left that vaguely.
Yeah, it's, it's interesting being on the, on this side. I, I was part of the working group to write, to write, to revision. So now I get to suffer all, all of, all of the decisions that I helped, helped encourage the board to adopt, though.
It was a lot of good work.
Thanks. Does anyone have other questions or thoughts?
I mean, I'm, I'm always sort of the one to, firstly, John just wanted to say thank you for your service. And I think this is an excellent proposal. I'm really glad you started this business, so thank you. I know you, you and Tara have excellent track record with building these businesses in town. I think you're really upping the level in the village. Parking is a, is a big issue, and we keep coming back to this. This is, you know, this is not the first time around, although this is actually a very new board. I'm not sure if you're aware, this, the planning board is new, so we're still getting our sea legs here. I think we need to take a closer look at parking, so I'd like to, like, take a breath here for a second.
Do you wanna basically like not, not visit it today?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
May I ask the following, do you think, should I prepare sort of like parking slot analysis drawings? In like, like, like sort of just like. In just preparation rather than come back in a few weeks and then say, now may you do this.
Yeah, yeah, we have to be super fair across the board, like we're doing this to everybody, right? So it's, and it's being fair to the people of the village, I guess. Um, we, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a really, um, it's a, it's a major issue. Um, and if we're not, you know, being, being fair at all, then we're just, you know, that would be, that'd be. Not the right thing to do, so, yeah, so let's, um, just. Put a pin in this for a second, we're not trying to slow down, we're just, we need to just take a breath and just analyze what's going on with the property, but. We'll get this.
We need, we need that additional details that we've already asked for as well, so I think just including that, uh, the next time and assuming that's all buttoned up, we'll. Make this, make a decision about where to, where to send what.
Do you have a timeline for when you were hoping to open?
So, uh, two months ago. When all the people start, you know, everybody's busy, summertime's coming, excited, and that's what I wanna be. Whenever you tell me. That's a really bummer, but then they can, you know, go hear about it.
Time in the summer, I hear.
Yeah, yeah.
So I just review before you sort of file, so a site plan adding in outdoor seating.
Uh, pointing out access, crash. Uh, lighting, signage, and any outdoor seating that you plan, and, and of course, the. At the very least, it would be good to know. Uh, exactly how many spots there are available in the back.
Sort of an analysis.
Yeah, and, um. Uh, if you could provide. I guess the, the interior script footage for Le Bouchon, maybe like the.
It's, it's there if you calculate it on the floor plans, but I can sum it as well. And convert it using six per thousand, I can convert it to a. Do we round down or up?
It wasn't, Alan.
Um, for parking, I would say round up. Well, if you put whatever.
Um, but, but round by, like, as in, as in four point three is four?
It is five.
It's five, okay, okay.
Um, so, and in terms of lighting, we're not really planning any different lighting.
It's true, it's just, uh, because the use is changing, we need to evaluate what lighting is there so that we know whether or not. That's a concern or not, like as, there may be requests from the board that you change lighting as a result of changing views, uh, so that's, that's all.
Um, got it. Crash, access.
Yeah. Signage, yeah.
And signage, we were planning only painted signage, not hung or like mounted signage.
Yeah, we don't, we don't, we don't have opinions about the. The aesthetics, uh.
You might have the opinions, you don't. Um, okay. Uh, got it, and, and, and we did. We already went to the historic district review board previously and sort of went through some of these things, is that a. So I'm documenting these things that will say there isn't signage, there isn't hung or mounted signage. Okay, cool, I'm just like confirming.
Yeah, yeah, what I'm delivering, yeah, yeah.
Should we get any sign up from them?
I think we, yeah, I think we did. Uh, or at least, yeah, okay, so.
I don't think it, it doesn't block, it shouldn't block us.
And then, um. Parking analysis, and then when is the next?
So if, if you can have that stuff to us, let's say by the ninth of next month, then we should be able to take it up. That's the thirteenth meeting.
And that's the next meeting, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, any other questions or?
Thank you both.
Okay, thank you very much.
Onto the main event. All main events.
Next one?
Alright, um. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing for one thirty-three, one thirty-five main? Welcome to the public hearing for one thirty-three, one thirty-five main. I'm gonna go ahead and read the public notice. Uh, the, the notice of public hearing into the records, so everyone knows what we're talking about. Please take note that the planning board of Village of Cold Spring will hold a public hearing pursuant to one thirty-four dash sixteen point one point G. A village law on Thursday, May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, Village Hall, eighty-five Main Street, Cold Spring, New York. Um, and via video conference, so if you're here, if you're at a conference, welcome. Planning board will consider the application by Matthew Luchek of eleven Garden Street, Cold Spring, New York. The subject property designated eighty, forty-eight dot eight dash six dash forty-three on the tax map. Is at one thirty-three, one thirty-five main, Cold Spring, New York, in the business B one district. As well as the village historic district. The applicants propose to convert an existing first floor residential space to commercial space, replace existing masonry stoop. And wood porch with a single covered porch and convert a second floor. Single residence to two apartments, a accessible will be a new rear step. Requiring site plan review for change of use and parking table of village law. Uh, the, the, the planning board will consider all verbal and or written statements from all persons interested in the proposed application. In the various manner described above, the planning will also, planning board will also consider such further relief as it finds necessary. Thank you all for joining. Confirm a few things with the clerk, um, has the notice been timely published in the official newspaper?
Yeah. Sorry, I am totally new to this, so it looks, I wanna make sure I'm reading this right, it was put in on the eighth. So it was published on five eight, and then it was reiterated on five six, five fifteen. And the ECNR.
Wasn't affected by their one week outage? They, they didn't, they didn't publish, uh.
Oh, yeah, one, one, yeah, we're, we.
They had a, they had a change of ownership, yeah, I'm sure that, I'm sure that disrupted a number of public things going on. Uh, has the applicant provided proof of mailing to affected parties?
What's the circumference of the area they have there?
Uh, it's all neighbors, all, all owners of neighboring lots, right?
Ah, I think so, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, including across, like across streets. Your affidavit of signage signed by applicant received.
Um, I don't think we have the affidavit, I know the zoning board uses that, the planning board wants to do that, we can do that as well. But James, do you wanna speak to that, that you've had to sign?
Yes, we put up a sign, um, it's, it's in fact the same sign that was up from the, um, the zoning board. And Karen was kind enough to change the X marks the spot.
Right, right. And I believe we've received two letters from neighbors, is that correct?
Um, yes.
Uh, that would be, um, one and then, um, there's a, should be a packet.
There's one email and then the.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Uh, we'll get to those in a second. The, the state secret determination for the record, the type two action. I think that the DBA already declared that type two, do we also need to vote like vote that is?
Yeah, just make a motion to demet a type two action receiver.
Would you like to make, make a motion for being this? Okay. James, would you like to come and present the, the whole of the, of the project to the, to the board in its current state?
Yes, and I'd also like to introduce.
So, um, thanks for opening up the public hearing. Um, so I've been working with Matt since probably November last year to come up with a strategy to. Renovate the property that he's purchased, which, you know, as we all know, is in pretty rough shape. Um, currently, it's a diamond in the rough. It's, no, it's not the best, the, um. The, it being in B one zoning, it has a, an. Essentially a, a non-conventional use on the first floor, which is the, the residential portion. Um, so the, um, the village's comprehensive plan, um, as well as the rezoning, um, has, um, has been. Encouraging to convert, you know, residential use or discourage residential use where a commercial would reinforce the. The fabric of the B one district. Um, so by, uh, converting that, uh, the portion of the first floor, so to be clear what's going on. The first floor has an entry stoop that accesses the residential unit above. Um, and adjacent to that, on one thirty-five Main Street is the, uh, is the commercial space. Formerly it was wild, currently Matt has a, a real estate agent renting that space. Um, while the, the plant shop that was there, um, and it's been a variety of other things over the years, including a vape shop, very, very briefly. But the, um. The, um, goal here is to convert the, um, the other first floor space as a commercial space. And then to create two separate, um, single, uh, single, um, bedroom apartments on the upper floor. With the rear yard extension and rear access to those. Um, we've also, uh, proposed to, uh, add a front porch to it. Um, and the porch, uh, is, uh, consistent with the neighboring porch, formerly Hudson Hills, now the Cozy Corner Cafe. Um, and the porch design actually helps solve one of the access problems that's endemic to Main Street because of the slope. By orienting the, um, the access steps to, um, on the east and west, so kind of accessing from the side. Um, it, uh, it eliminates the, the cross pitch issue that has caused a lot of very serious falls at various businesses. So, um, it's a, it's a vast improvement in public safety as people access the, the structure. And, um, as you know, we've gotten the variance for, um, a slight increase in light area coverage. Um, and also variance on, on parking requirements, um, so. And, um, per your input, um, you've added, um, an angled parking space to, um. To, uh, meet the parking space requirements for the, the remaining two required. Parking spaces, um, and, um, and so that's what's depicted on the site plan. Um, we've also included, uh, site lighting, um, and, uh, planting for screening, um, as required. Um, the, uh, uh, six foot fencing to separate the B one, uh, use from the neighboring, um, residential properties. Um, and I think that's about it as a summary.
Uh, so I think maybe we sort of point out a couple, I know you've added a few things that we, that we asked for. And a few additional things since the last, the board reviewed the site plan, so maybe you could just run us through those changes?
Great, yes, so on site plan one oh one, uh, there's, I've also, uh, brought in today a enlarged version. So you should have eleven by seventeen's available. Um, I, you know, because the, uh, the, the site plan is rather small, I provided a blow up of that too to help. Um, so you can see, um, we've added stepping stones to, uh, for, um. To provide, you know, kind of a non-slip, uh. Access pathway, um, to the stairs, uh, both for laundry, that's provided, provided down to the basement. Entry, um, and to the, uh, to the residential flight of stairs as well. And, um, we've also included. Full cutoff lighting, step lighting, so that, you know, pathway lighting that eliminates only the pathway without creating any glare situation, which is, you know, direct. Beams of light into your eyes, so it's less disturbing, um, so eliminating the, uh, the walking surface without, you know, kind of. Creating, uh, light pollution. And, uh, other features, um, in response to concerns, uh, from my former landlord over. To Campbell Avenue, uh, Mr. Brian Nichols. I've added, um, additional screening to, um, prevent headlights from spilling onto his property as well as, uh. Tire stops, you know, curb stops to, uh, uh, prevent, um, someone from driving too far in the, um. From the parking spaces. Um, garbage bins are located in a, a kind of container off to the side. Um, and ADA accessible ramp along the, uh, south side adjacent to Hudson Hills.
Uh, I think the, the exterior lighting is noted, there, we have, um. We have. Yeah, yeah, this, uh, this is the, the white legend.
Yeah, there's, uh, yeah, if you look at. A one oh one, um, and four one oh two, um, specifically if you can find the larger, um. Eight and a half by eleven, uh, sets to order parking trucks. Um, I highlighted in yellow just to make it a lot easier to, to spot those.
Yeah. Uh, just, I wanna run through them just to, just to point out where, where they are, so we've got, um. Uh, kind of working our way from the front on the ground floor back, we've got lighting, um, on the front deck. Both sides, we've got lighting, uh, on, uh, the entryway stairs to both sides of the deck. The lighting along the driveway, uh, what you think you included some pictures of what that kind of looks like there?
This is my own house on Front Street, so, um, this is essentially the same lighting, um, exactly the same kind of.
Does this affect your neighbor at all?
No, it's other than, you know, like the ground being ripped, it's, uh, no, no light pollution.
Um, we've got, uh, lighting up the ADA ramp and lighting, um, on the first floor. Deck in the back.
Yes.
And then, um. Uh, lighting going down to the basement.
Yep.
And then, um. Uh, regular lighting going upstairs, at the top of the stairs and at the entryway to each of the apartment.
Actually, we're hoping to have them on the, the yard side of the stairs, on that, that stringer, only on the yard side. So that the light is being cast back towards the building and not towards the neighbors, so, um.
Yeah.
And then it would be on the railing.
No, on, on the stringer itself, so the enclosure to the stairs. Actually, another word for these, I'll refer to them often as step lighting, they're really designed for the stairs.
Do they have motion protection?
It's a, it's all a possibility. Unlimited controls, it could be geo fencing so that you can have it up with your phone program so that as you approach, the lights go on. And then with the time it can go off.
Okay. But they're pretty great, I mean, yeah. They're more important, people don't hurt themselves walking.
Yeah. You also pointed out changes to the stairs themselves, right?
Yes, that so the
Grading?
Grading, oh, yeah, sorry, yeah, right, the steps, the treads are a non-slip open grading that meets ADA minimum opening or maximum opening spacing so that snow or rain can fall through.
Yeah.
And and they're non-slip for easy grip. And that was another concern raised by a Mr. Michael that the the sound of footsteps would be disturbing that this heavier metal gauge would actually be rather quiet compared to planks.
Anyone have any other comments or questions?
So.
We'll we'll get we'll get the comment in a second.
With the sale of the few feet of village property, has that gone through? Yes, that's been finalized.
Well, I just want to say thank you for being so responsive to the the board's comments and and requests. I think it I'd like to think that we ended up with a site plan that was a meaningful improvement in meeting both and and lead to the village, so.
Wonderful process, I gotta tell you, not so many people say that, but.
So do we need a motion to open the public comment?
Oh, I think you already did a motion, actually, okay. Open the public hearing, you don't need a separate.
Okay, okay, great. Okay, so before we before we get to folks either on Zoom or in person, I'll go ahead and read the two communications we've received about the property. So this is from the law firm Stigler, Stinger Glass, Haxstrom, Lighters, and Uli.
Ueli.
Ueli. Ueli, thank you. Dear Chairperson Saint Charles and Planning Board members, this law form has been retained by Brian Nichol to represent his interest in connection with a certain application for site plan review made by Matthew Bechek, which is presently scheduled for consideration by the planning board on the evening of May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Nichol owns a property which shares a boundary with the property, which is subject to, which is the subject of this application. The for those that are following along, the Mr. Nichols is his property is noted on the site plan here on the south, the southwest corner. I'll new. Mr. Nichols' property dates back to the founding of the village. It is one one bedroom with a full bath and kitchen, which Mr. Nichol recently remodeled. Windows in the kitchen, dining room, upstairs bedroom, and second floor landing look directly into the property that is subject that is the subject of this application. We are concerned that the applicant has not protected the neighbors from the noise and light pollution that his proposal will create. The impacts of the project are different than the ambient noise and light that one would expect in village life. Rather than rather, the applicant proposes to introduce people and cars into a private space that has been off limits to public to public for decades. The application seeks to intensify the long time use of the property from one resident unit to one commercial unit and one commercial unit to two residential units to and to commercial unit. It is not known at this time how many people these units will introduce into the cramped backyard. The applicant proposes to locate two parking spaces in the small backyard as well as stairs leading to residential units. The lights from one of the cars will shine directly into Mr. Nichols' kitchen as it maneuvers into the angled parking space. Even with a perimeter fence, the cars will create ambient light which will shine into his building. The proposal unacceptably imposes the noise of cars starting at any time of the day, night upon neighbors. There is no design feature which will combine the vehicles to the parking space. Instead of pulling further into the yard, the applicant must install solid fixing fencing at the edge of the angled parking space to block the light and muffle the noise of cars. We are concerned that tenants will make noise going up and downstairs and opening and closing doors to the residences at any time of day or night. No plans are available which commit the applicant to using building materials which will mitigate this noise. The tenants will not be safe walking up and down exposed stairs in the dark in bad weather. The stairs must be enclosed for the protection of the neighbors as well as the tenants. Enclosure would mitigate the noise as well as the effect of the lighting that will have to be installed for tenant safety. We request that the public hearing be continued so the applicant can apply for a variance that might be required to enclose the stairs and to obtain approval from the historic commission regarding the materials that we use against the backyard. These are vital pieces of information the planning board must have to determine whether to extend the property's present use to even more intensive use requested by the applicant. The applicant is before the planning board for site plan review for change of use and parking table under code one thirty-four dash sixteen point one A. The purpose of the site plan approval is to ensure that the development and use of land does not have an adverse effect on adjacent lands or the character of the community. In granting the site approval, the planning board has the power to impose regional conditions and restrictions as are related to and incidental to the proposed site plan. See Village Law seven dash seven twenty-five dash A four. Additional fencing and enclosure requested by this correspondence are such reasonable conditions. We respectfully request the planning board continue the public hearing until the site plan is amended to address the issues raised by this correspondence, very truly yours, Mary Kay Ephraim. Mary, are you here with us?
Me.
Okay, thank you. As I'm as I'm going through this and as we are receiving comment from folks in the room and online, I'll remind the board that and and everyone that comments are to be addressed to the board, not to the applicant. The board will hear what you have to say. We may not have anything to say back, that's okay. But we will definitely listen to everyone's comments and 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 make that a consideration. Also note, just because it was brought up in this particular letter, I just want to reaffirm that the the role of the planning board in the village, it is it is emphatically not our role to push any applicant towards a non-conforming site plan. Like, that's not a thing we deal in, so just so that everyone knows that we're we 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 encourage people to make site plans conforming. That's and those are the things we deal with and we we navigate within the space of conforming site plans. So that's the purview of the planning board. Okay, I've got one other. This is from John Allison's email to the Cool Spring Planning Board. I'm a twenty-year resident at eight Campbell Ave. And as such, have a clear line of sight to the back of the building and backyard at one thirty-three, one thirty-five Main Street. It has not been a pleasant sight. I was very happy to see that the property had been purchased and that improvements were planned. I was even more happy when I reviewed the drawings and renderings of proposed improvements. The proposal is a huge upgrade to the property and the village and will only improve the experience of those of us living in close proximity to the property. I wholeheartedly support proposal for work at one thirty-three, one thirty-five Main Street as designed. I'm very much looking forward to seeing and enjoying the end results of the improvement every day from my home and backyard. Please let me know if you have additional questions or need additional information regards John Allison, the Campbell Avenue. Great.
No, I'm not John Allison. I was shaking my hand, so maybe I could be next.
Okay, great.
I'm sorry.
Noted, noted. Okay, so we're going to move on to the public comments phase. So the the ask is that you give your name and your address. We'll start in the room and then we'll go online. So if you would like to.
On Garden Street. I just wanted to speak in favor of the project. Personally, I know I know Matt, who's been my neighbor for many, many years, probably over twenty years at this point. And I I very familiar with the work that he does. I know he does extremely high quality work. I'm also in favor of this project because what it's doing is protecting Main Street as a a commercial corridor for the village. And walking up up and down Main Street, I'm I'm sometimes nervous that there are going to be more buildings that are going to try and convert their downstairs space to living space. And that would really that would completely change the character of the village and really make it not a village anymore, but a bedroom community. So when I see this, a person who's actually taking a space that was a living space and turning it back into a commercial space, I think that's to be applauded by the village. And I think it's in keeping with the the purpose of of the village. You know, and the right, I live off of Main Street, there's no commercial spaces on my on my street. But I do, it's to me, one of the reasons why I'm here in the village is so I can go out to Main Street, go to coffee shops, go to whatever store to buy cheese or go to the bookstore and hopefully go to a business in this space. And I do think that when you are living in the village, you can't you can't expect that there's going to be, you're not going to hear a neighbor, that you're not going to see a light from a car or something like that. Yes, when you're planning, you want to try and mitigate these things if they can. But when you live close to people in the village, you just you have to have some faith that they're going to live reasonably. And that's why we choose to live in the village, because we want to have neighbors and we want to have businesses that that we can go to. So I hope the planning board keeps that in in mind, because I think this is going to be a great contribution to the village. And it's and it's going to maintain that, you know, that nineteenth century Hudson River Village feel that is really so important. And it's important to me as someone who lives here, and I grew up here, but went away and came back. And I came back because it's such a great place. Thank you. Thank you.
As a as a bit of reassurance, the B one district does not allow converting commercial to residential.
But I will say, I think there are some commercial spaces that did do that. Yes, so I'm just saying, there are some spaces that I think.
This board will not will not will not allow such a thing because it's strictly for it's 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 very, it's very explicit in in the in the zoning law. That that's not allowed, so.
I also want to speak to James, whose work is exceptional.
Thank you.
So.
Okay, anyone else in the room? If you could say your name and I think you're the who you're representing in the village.
My name's Mary Katie Frank, Stinger Glass, Haxstrom, Lindar's, and Ueli. We're in Waffinjust Falls, just a little bit south of the Volkswagen dealership on Route nine. I live in Garrison, and I'm the one that wrote the letter on behalf of Mr. Nickle. You know, I did have a call with James before I wrote the letter, and I wanted to thank you, James, for adding the changes that you've described. I have not had a chance to review them myself or send them to my client. So I do ask that the public hearing be kept open so I can take the changes back to my client. Overall, he is concerned about noise in the cars as well as people. I do not disagree that the building is in rough shape and that it, you know, needs the rehab that's been posed. My problem is that the use of it is much more intense than what it was designed for. And that intensity of use is being directed toward the back, which is a private area. So in terms of like people coming and going in and out, the noise you would expect to hear from storefronts on the street might be happening in the back. The ADA ramp goes to the back, there's commercial, the commercial units and residential units both have decks in the back. You know, when I spoke to James, the fence had been proposed at the head of the parking spaces. I do know that we had begun this process with planning for cars. So I know that the parade of hariboles is going to be well. What if some twenty-five-year-old that likes parties rents one of the apartments and his friends all pile in the backyard? So that's why I asked that I be given the opportunity to look at the plans and take them back to to Brian and see if we can see what's been changed and how much of his concerns have been addressed. As far as I request that the stairs be enclosed, James mentioned that that would, you know, require another variance because it would indicate lot coverage. I haven't confirmed that, but assuming it's true. We've already been to Z B A on this application. Z B A, I believe, can only decide what is brought to it. So, you know, I don't think the Z B A has authority to say, you know, while we give you a couple more percent so you can cover the stairs, you know. So I did get the impression from the resolution that there's general support for the project because the building is in such poor condition and because of the needs of the comp plan and the and the housing emergency in New York, which I don't disagree with. So that's that's another reason I asked that the meeting be kept open. You know, because I I need to have Brian look at the materials and like assess the impact of the people. And if anything can be done design-wise to mitigate those impacts that hasn't been in the revision that James just made, you know, we can keep on talking about it.
So? Thank you.
Can I just say one thing, then I'm going to leave? I I have to say, I I just find this.
Please address the the board.
I am just, yes, I find this completely ridiculous and that one person and the neighbor isn't even here, the neighbor's attorney is here. There is a public hearing, the the neighbor was able to write a letter, wrote a letter to the board. And I think this request to hold the hearing open for one party to continue to litigate this really defeats the the spirit of this, which is to hold a public hearing, notify people, people are notified, they show up, they can send letters, and they have a public hearing. Now, if the board has some other reason to hold it open, yes, do it. But I just hope to keep that in mind again. Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, do we have anyone online who would like to make comment? Kathy, I think you're the only one.
No, thank you.
Those are no, thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Okay, so we've heard a lot. So things to note, you know, the there have been some small changes to the plan here at the end. I think my my personal opinion that they are small and like they're directionally trying to deal with some of the issues raised in in the letters, which I think is good. But they're not for me, they don't materially change the 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 kind of the shape, quality of the application. So I'm comfortable moving to close public comment. Does anyone else have any concerns about that?
About closing the comment?
Yeah.
No, I'm fine with that. No, I mean, my my opinion here is that I think you've you've done a great job. I know that we put some demands on you, and you've been great sports about going through the process. Thank you for bearing with us. And in fact, Um, and uh, in fact, um, you know, we've, we've been requiring you to up the parking, not, not, not reduce the parking, that's, that's the clear and present need as of, you know, as we, as we've made clear that the, the, the village has, is an inflection point at a crisis with parking. So thank you for, for meeting in the middle. Um, with that said, um, you've then taken steps to, to help out your client here with um, you know, plantings and so forth, and hopefully you can just communicate directly with the client.
Yeah, we're neighbors, I mean, that's why we live in the village.
Exactly.
I'm here for thirty years.
Exactly.
Raised my family here. What we, I'm concerned about my neighbors and my friends, you know, they're, they're important to me. So a project like this is something that will improve the community and hopefully the neighboring properties as well. I'm, I'm looking to do good things for the village that I love so much.
Uh, you know, you got a great track record of that.
Yeah.
Um, sorry, what were you gonna say, Jim?
Yes, I started to, but um, I also just wanna add that um, um, when the, uh, Brian had received um, uh, a notice that, um, you know, for our applications, this is actually for the ZBA, but same process, um, that uh, he had emailed me, because you know, he's my former landlord, um, that um, I, I've sent to him the application material um, um, back then in April nine. So um, so he's been aware of this for quite a while, so.
Just a little. Uh, we live the village. Um, it's, it's, it's a nineteenth-century village, it's very, eighteen-century village, it's very, it's very compact and contained. Um, we're taking essentially a zombie property and, and bringing it back to life again, which I think is wonderful. And so I, I would like to move forward with this property.
Um, so right now, just, uh, I think if anyone would like to make a motion to close the public hearing, um, we can do, we can.
I, I do wanna ask uh, the lawyer a question. Would that be part of the public hearings or is that separate?
You can ask question now.
Okay. Well, um, with the changes, you haven't had a chance to talk to your client about them?
No.
And have they, did they not wanna come and comment now on, on the, on the proposed changes? And, and is there any feeling that they might not be okay with the proposed changes? Or no, I don't.
I didn't know that plans had changed until James mentioned it just now. Um, I. My last communication with the client was him reviewing the ZBA meetings, which came this morning. So. As far as he is, whether these would be acceptable to him, is when we had our conversations, he was most concerned about noise from people going up and down the stairs, but also the cars starting and the lights flooding as that one car pulls in. So if I may ask James if he could just describe very quickly the barrier that's been built across the parking?
So we had about five phone conversations yesterday.
Five, two.
So, um, we've added more planting here, evergreens.
Evergreen.
And, you know, it kinda creates a nice, kind of more yard-like feature there, less parking. Um, tire stops to prevent the vehicles from driving forward.
Alright.
Um, and then um, the steps, uh, you know, this is, this is the lighting that we're proposing all around and including on, only on this real side, so that it's facing back towards the building. So there's no light being directed at all towards Brian's property.
Uh, just, if I were to interrupt, uh, um, point of order on, in terms of uh, your communication is directed at us, not at, not at the applicant or his architect.
Okay.
Uh, so um, uh, understood that we got some explanation there, but I, I don't want this to, to go into a conversation, uh, so as, as it's, it needs to be with the board. So do you feel like your, your question was answered there?
Yes, I, I mean, I, I.
Okay.
As, as well as she could, you know, yeah, I, I, I don't know if she had been able to completely answer with the information that she has. Because you said that he just, you were just made aware recently, so you didn't have a chance.
Right, I only learned of the revised plans during James' presentation here tonight. Um, so I'll have, I'll carry them back to my client, we'll talk through them. Um.
Thank you.
May I ask you a question about the lighting?
You may actually ask.
The lighting, um, for the residences on the deck, are there gonna be overhead lights, like little, little door lights or lights for if they have people over can entertain? Is, is there any, gonna be any lighting at the top?
It's a residential space, it would like to be lights that you would have at your own house. Right, we'll see, there's just a light outside each door?
Uh, so the, the lighting, the lighting plan was included in the, in the application packet. Um, and there is lighting uh, on the, on, on the stairs and at the top of the stairs, um, of, uh, foot lighting. Um, and it's residence, so there are windows, there may be lights that come out from, from the windows. Um, but uh, would anyone like to make a motion to close the public comment here?
I'll make a motion to close.
Would anyone like any? Okay, all in favor?
Alright.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for participating here. Um, I really appreciate it. Um, okay, so uh, we can move on to board comment. Um, I'll just go around, everyone can have, say their, what their opinions are of the, of the application and um, and then we can figure out what to do from there. Uh, I'll go ahead and start myself. Um, so things that I, that I've noted already, just that I appreciate the, the willingness to, to work both with us and uh, with the request of the neighbors. Um, I think uh, you know, a lot of, a lot of how we evaluate um, site plan, we don't always know what's possible, but we can see um, uh, the, the willingness to work with our concerns and the modifications that come out. Um, we had some things that we thought were possible that uh, on parking that ended up not being uh, uh, pursued, which is, you know, fine. Um, but we had a bunch of things that I think that uh, we brought up that were addressed meaningfully, and I think like make, made the, made the site plans uh, much better. And um, as a, as a, as a whole, I think it's a great, it's, it is, it is a great improvement to the village. Um, I think like it is confusing to people when they come to Cold Spring and they see this weird mix of decay and vibrancy. And uh, this is one of the buildings that is more on the decay side than it is on the vibrancy side. And I think um, you know, insofar as we have projects that continue to move the, the needle towards um, by that vibrancy and importantly, in a way that makes the village more accessible. The fact that at, the adding of the ADA compliant ramp was a, was a meaningful step in that direction. Most, uh, most buildings in the, in the village don't, don't have that. Um, uh, and uh, so I really appreciate uh, that work and the willingness to work with us on that. Um, that being said, the property is um, uh, borders a, a residential zone. And there are real, there are real concerns about noise and light and traffic and all those things. We are in a, we are in a village and uh, you know, the, whether, whether you border um, a business district or you don't, um, we're in close proximity to one another. You see your neighbors, you see their lights, you see their cars. Um, so um, for me, the, I think this was well-engaged, it's a good project overall. And the degree to which um, uh, the, the negatives can be mitigated reasonably, I think has really been attempted here. So um, those are my feelings. Anyone like to comment?
Uh, well, my comment would be that I, I do feel for residents of, of Main Street. I'm a resident of Main Street, so when there's businesses intertwined with, with residents, I, I understand that the need for us to make sure that people who have resided in spaces for a long period of time are not, you know, negatively affected by, by, by the change. But I think as the planning board, we have to look at the overall benefit for the village, for the neighbors, because we even heard from another neighbor that it is a, it, it's a rundown place now and it would be an improvement. So, and I think that there has been um, steps to, to, to address some of the concerns as well. So I just wanted to put that out there, that um, you know, the decision that I'm gonna make is, is, is keeping in mind with somebody that, that was um, that, that was not for this, you know, exact project, but um, you know, that, that just wanna make sure that that, that their voice, you know, was heard and that other people who are in similar situations feel free to step up and, and question um, whether the, the changes are valid um, going forward, so. That's it.
Yeah, I'll say, I, I think uh, the applicant and the architect have been exceedingly responsive to our requests. And um, and it, and it feels uh, that um, that uh, uh, Mr. McNichol's concerns were, were heard and were considered. And um, I don't feel that Mr. McNichol is entitled to have a property that has, a neighboring property that has been underutilized. I don't feel that that is a, um, an entitlement of his going forward. I think you have the right to uh, use the property uh, more fully. And I think it would be a definitely, I mean, it's obviously a benefit to the village overall. And I really like the lighting changes. I, I like dark skies and I, I think that's great.
Alright.
I have nothing more to add. I agree with everything everyone said so far. I can't add on to that.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I think we've continued communication, possibly over-communication with Mr. McNichol. I think, I think you can satisfy his needs, um, you know, he's got some concerns. Um, we can't control exactly who's gonna be the tenants in those spaces. I'm also a landlord and a, and a property investor, I get it. Um, but we live in a village and, and I really appreciate, you know, the, what's sure gonna be substantial capital investment into this property, and the, the village really needs that improvement. I mean, it's a very rundown property and it's gonna be, it's gonna be great, so, so I'm, I'm excited by it. Um, and uh, you know, I, I, I spoke, you know, uh, ten minutes ago, so I don't have much more to add than that, but I, I'm, I'm excited by the, by the project, so thank you.
Hey, um, thank you for everyone for your thoughtful consideration here. Um. Um, I mean, I think we, we have enough information. I think we can move to, to vote to um, approve or not the application. So um, would anyone like to make a motion to, or would anyone like to, I guess?
Yeah, I think procedurally in the past, the way the, the board has done it is, um, they made a motion to authorize me to prepare a resolution um, of approval, uh, that can be adopted by the board at the next meeting.
Yeah.
I move to what he said.
I think we, we need to articulate it, unfortunately.
Um, somebody else, because I can't, uh, I move that for Jonathan to our attorney to create a resolution.
Uh, approving was that site plan one oh one dated uh, May?
Approving that site plan one oh one dated April.
May twenty-second?
May twenty-second, yesterday.
You made a motion?
I made, yeah.
We'll say it, the motion.
Okay.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye. Motion to the board.
Great, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for the kind word.
Well done.
Pretty excited about the project myself.
No, I have to say the process is, it's rigorous, but it's, it's thorough and appropriate.
Yeah, it's worth it, definitely worth it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So thanks for going with that.
Okay. Um. Jonathan, you're gonna, you're gonna, you have a, do you have a, a, a draft?
Yeah, so I'll, um, I'll prepare that um, to reflect uh, tonight's vote and discussion, and at the next meeting, um, everyone can adopt it.
Okay.
Everything.
Uh, alright. Um. Any sort of, well, uh, do we have any other public con, comment not related to the public hearing? Or, or I guess publicly, could be related to anything.
I still have a comment, if I may, no? No?
Sure, you could.
Something to say?
You can, you can, you can make a comment, Amber.
I have something to say?
Sure.
Okay, because this could be a new business. I've noticed that when we have the new applicants, there are sort of four or five things that we always ask them to do, and that's uh, the lighting, the ingress, egress.
Yeah.
Um, trash disposal.
Yeah.
Um, drainage, that kind of thing. I almost feel like somehow that should be more incorporated, so that, for example, um, we had, what, twenty-sixth main Gina with the brass monkey?
Yeah.
If she, I think if she had known what was really expected of her.
Yeah.
She wouldn't have had to come back. I would just sort of like to see that the process could be a little.
Yeah, the, uh, yeah, the application.
Um, yeah, I mean, it's definitely something, so all that, those requirements are in the code.
They are in the code.
Of course, not everyone is, you know, particularly savvy when it comes to, to stilling down what they need. But um, you could have like a checklist in the application. Uh, but I guess the problem is, you know, those are the, the common issues, but then you get another application that has other issues, so it, it can be hard to make a checklist.
I think, I think maybe it will be, will be worthwhile if you are so inspired that you can take a look at the um, application.
Okay.
And uh, bring back to the board suggestions for improvement.
Okay, well.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, okay, um, no public comments? Um, so we have a, a, a last bit of board business. Um, our, our board secretary Karen is uh, is, is retiring.
No.
Yeah, she's.
Oh, no.
My commute.
Hang on, what?
Uh, and uh, and.
Was it something we did?
Yeah. Unfortunately, it's gonna happen before uh, our next meeting. So this will be our last time with Karen in official capacity. And um, I just wanted to say, for the record, um, what an incredibly valuable resource you've been. Um, thank you, and you'll be dearly missed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's your mention? I appreciate that, and you, and for a new board, starting out, I think the village is in good hands, so. But John, John, it's very nice getting to know all of you.
Yeah, well, I, I personally appreciate, you know, having all new board members except for the chairman that, that was on another board, that you really held our hands and got us to this point. And I think that the success, the early success of this board is in, in no small measure to, to your help.
Agreed.
So mostly welcome, it was my pleasure, I really do enjoy it, and you're in good hands here, so, Kelly and James.
I'm gonna introduce myself to you as you came in later, I'm Jane.
Hi, Jane.
Hi, Jane. I'm gonna try to be the new head. Don't put too much pressure on me.
No. You can be the new Jane, you don't have to be all.
That's right, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be Jane.
What else do you do here?
I'm gonna be board secretary and I'm gonna be um, the deputy clerk, so I'm gonna be involved with a lot of all this paperwork.
Yeah, cool. Great, okay. But I, I was, I was worried when you said, like, the last minutes at like, two twenty in the morning, like, the other night, I was like. Okay. But I, I've gotta talk to people about that, but it's not good.
We, we had some late emails going there, and I either did that or I wasn't gonna sleep, so.
The baby down?
I just.
No, the baby wasn't up, I was just cram, cramming a bunch of board stuff in the last like hour before I had to put the baby down.
Well, I'm, I'm more of a late-night person anyway, when everything else is quiet, so I totally get it.
Yeah, yeah, I'm a now, a, a late-night and early-morning Christian, so.
Yeah. Sharing pictures of your lovely child, I would enjoy them.
We're gonna miss you.
When's your last date there?
Uh, June seventh.
June seventh, okay.
June seventh. That's it. Alright, I'm going home for Karen.
Alright, go.
Bye.
Thank you.
I think that reaches the end, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Second.
Bye.
Bye.